Do you want to introduce yourself to the audience at home?
Sure. My name is Ryan Grusenberry. I'm a planner with the Cape Cod Commission. And I've been working for the past nine months on updating the county's formerly pre-disaster mitigation plan, but now referred to as the multi-hazard mitigation plan. I'll explain more about what that is in my presentation. I have a copy of the draft plan for you all to review if you'd like. I'm sorry, there aren't more. We had some technical difficulties in the house this morning.
Paul, could you get the light, please?
Right. This is essentially the one that you've sent me a copy of for the deal?
Yes. This plan, again, is in draft stage right now. NEMA is reviewing it for an initial round of comments before it's sent on to FEMA. It will be available through the Cape Cod Commission website probably in the next couple of days so we can open up our public comment period. So it likely won't go to FEMA for final consideration until the end of February. So with that out, starting. And the projector here is cutting off the bottom of the screen. I think in the title slide is the only one where you'll notice it, but that piece that's cut off there is the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Below that, it says that it's coordinated and written by the Cape Cod Commission. So why do you have hazard mitigation planning? There's two reasons. One, again, there's a monetary incentive. Certified plans are eligible for two pots of discretionary federal grant funds, hazard mitigation grant program and the pre-disaster mitigation program. And then regional and local MHM plans are just a good idea. They represent good planning, preparedness, responsibility, good common sense, particularly in a region that's vulnerable to certain types of hazards and where those hazards are projected to become more severe in the coming decades. Just before I go forward, to be clear about what hazard mitigation is, it's intended to permanently reduce or prevent loss of life, injuries and property damage caused by natural disasters by using long-term strategies. The scope of work for the multi-hazard mitigation plan begins with utilizing the 2004 planning process. It was very effective, these regional and local multi-hazard community planning teams that were formed to carry out the work both at the local level and then at the regional level. And then what follows from that is the same format that FEMA is requiring, this time around, that a hazard ID and risk assessment be completed, a vulnerability analysis would follow that, mitigation strategy, and finally, a plan approval and adoption process. This is the list of the regional planning team members as of October. The town representatives are, for the most part, town planners, but not in every case. And almost every town was represented in the process. The regional representatives are members of county agencies, various county agencies that were involved in the 2004 planning process. And then there are some additional folks that have particular expertise in regional issues. The Province Towns of the Coast of Studies, for instance, was a new addition to this process. And what is cut off on the bottom here are the three facilitators, myself, and then two folks that like to pay particular respect to. Hon Marie, Sergeant Rogers of the Rapide Bay has been very helpful in donating her time to this process, as has Dr. Lynn Carter of the Adaptation Network. And they've both been trying to bring the element of climate change thinking and climate change adaptation planning into this process. So in 2004, there were nine certified PDM plans that resulted in that planning process. I believe, yeah, these are going to be cut off. So they're all represented there on the left. On the right, there have been 10 towns that have participated in the regional process. The top five, which are in black, Chatham, Province Town, East Town, Truro, and Dennis, submitted their draft plans to NEMA for initial review along with the county's regional plan. Brewster Sandwich, Barnstable, Harwich, Mashpee, all hope to have their draft plans submitted by late spring. And then what's not shown here also is Falmouth, which didn't participate in the county's process, but they were a member of CZM's Storm Smart Coast Pilot Program. And I believe that that will result in a hazard mitigation plan for that town as well. So step two in the process is to conduct a risk assessment. You need to be able to identify your hazards, assess your vulnerability to know what you're planning for. There are two parts to the risk assessment. There's an emergency operations plan, which is separate from the hazard mitigation planning, where the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee are the coalition of first responders that deal with the emergency operations plan. The hazard mitigation plan really is designed to develop a strategy, a long-term strategy for reducing risk. And the Cape Cod Commission has been the primary lead on doing that within the county. We did this through the use of GIS. This is a risk and vulnerability assessment map. And what it shows at the regional level are a list of critical facilities. And by that we mean airports, electric transmission lines, schools, hospitals, things of regional significance. And each town also has a map broken down to their corresponding town scale that has the regional critical facilities and then local critical facilities, fire stations, things like that that are important. This also, what you're seeing here, though the color doesn't come through, is that darker color along the coastlines is the slosh zone, and that's the sea-land, what is, I'm blanking. Sea-land, overland hurricane surge. Thank you. The Army Corps of Engineers are responsible for developing that data. Their topographic information for this planning process has been improved. It's more sophisticated. And as a result, the slosh area across the Cape has gone down, which is perhaps a good The next piece that we looked at was the Hazard Identification and Ranking, which identifies your hazards. FEMA requires that you rank them. That helps to drive your priority structure in your mitigation strategy, what you're going to focus on primarily. What we have here, that flood and shoreline change are the primary natural hazards affecting the Cape, followed by wildfires, snow ice accumulation, wind. Climate change is here for the first time as a hazard, as it's expected to exacerbate all of those before it. Drought, tornado, and the bottom one that's cut off there is earthquakes. Next, the vulnerability analysis. This is a portion of the plan. It shows better when you look at it on a more local scale. These are those risk and vulnerability assessment maps that Commission GIS worked with the towns to create. On the left is Chatham, on the right is Dennis. It shows again the slosh area. It shows Zone 2s, evacuation routes, their regional and local critical facilities, repetitive loss properties. So there's a lot of really useful information here. And how we began this was giving the old critical facilities data to the towns on a map with updated slosh and repetitive loss data so that they could then update their critical facilities, find out what may now be in the slosh zone that wasn't before. This is what the local hazard mitigation planning team has used to update their information. A quick regional vulnerability summary, 46,000 acres in slosh is actually smaller than it was for last, and that's because of better data. There are still 85 intersections of evacuation, however, that are within the slosh zone. I think that the Regional Emergency Planning Committee continues to deal with that in some of their work, but we could collaborate better about that. There are 179 critical facilities located in slosh zone. Seven of those critical facilities are located in a wildfire risk area, and then 148 repetitive loss properties, which is 23 more than there were in 2004. And the mitigation strategy is the culmination of all of this work. And I've just pulled a couple of sample action items from the regional plan for you. These are action items that carried over, or either completed or carried over, from the 2004 plan. The first was to establish a county ordinance to encourage ongoing hazard mitigation planning. In our regional review, we felt ordinance was probably a bit too strong, and perhaps that's why it wasn't ever completed. So it was revised to be a resolution, and we hope that we can implement that as part of the 2010 mitigation strategy. As well as, action item six was completed. It was to incorporate natural hazard mitigation planning and best practices into our regional planning work. And if you look at the coastal resources section of the 2009 RPP, I think you'll see a much more advanced handling of that issue. Some new action items. One would be to establish a hazard mitigation planning working group to facilitate and monitor the implementation of the 2010 MHM plan. I think the idea behind this was that there could be better coordination so that more gets done in the five-year window that we have to work with this. The Cape Cod Commission is involved, and so is the REPC quite heavily, but we don't work together as often as we should. And the AmeriCorps folks, I think, see a lot of opportunity in this plan for projects for their groups. I think they'd like to be more involved, too. And then another one was to support the development of regional and local climate adaptation plans as an extension of the MHM plan. This plan didn't fully develop into a climate adaptation plan. We didn't think that it would, but we thought it might be a first step at the beginning to think in those terms. It's worth noting that of the original 23 action items in the 2004 PDM plan, two were completed, 12 are ongoing through efforts of county agencies, primarily the Regional Emergency Planning Committee. And nine have been continued into the 2010 MHM plan. And then there were six new action items. And then the plan approval goals are a little bit different this round than they were in 2004. In 2004, they wanted local adoption first and then FEMA certification. The problem was FEMA had changes to the plan, so you had to go through a second round of local adoption. This time around, we're seeking FEMA approval pending local adoption. Once we get certification through FEMA, we'll come through for an endorsement from the Cape Cod Commission to you to then vote to endorse the plan as the county plan. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Now, I have a question. Does this include rising sea levels? Is that considered part of mitigation?
We try to include it as a data consideration, as a hazard ID and risk assessment. The trick with doing sea level rise maps is that the topographic data isn't great yet. You could be off by a wide margin. There's something called LiDAR data that I think would, that gives you a really high resolution topographic, and I think it's within one foot. So it's expensive data to get. I think it's something that the state is looking at for our coastlines. And once that's available, I could see sea level rise maps being a component of the future iteration of this plan. But at this point, we felt it was not quite accurate enough to put on there and buzz alarm when we knew that there was going to be a lot of variability in its accuracy.
But I'm thinking, too, in terms of, well, it has, I attended a couple of meetings. One was helped by the state. I think you were there, too, among those LiDAR maps.
Yeah.
And also listened to some of the withheld scientists who have taken certain sections of Falmouth and said, and actually posted states that showed that this area would be underwater by such and such a year, or something like that. So I'm thinking in terms of the effect that that not only has on the hazard mitigation, but also on just planning and in terms of going on and developing and things of that nature. I would think this would be something that planning boards should be very aware of if they're voting on or if they're reviewing plans for development or redevelopment.
And I think it was, at least at the local level, of consideration. Several towns put their beaches and their beach parking lots as critical facilities, things that they depend on locally that are subject to sea level rise and storm surge. So different towns handled it differently. I think not all towns were comfortable really incorporating climate change data and adaptation thinking into their plans. I think they were strapped for resources and did the best that they could. And in the county plan, we tried to incorporate it as much as we could and thereby keep it as a reference for local plans. But there's definitely room for more improvement in that department throughout this committee.
One of the questions they raised when we were in the process of this is that while the county commissioners are responsible for the action items, there needs to be some mechanism built in so that we're reminded to take that action. And what are you proposing for that?
I think that that's exactly where the Hazard Mitigation Planning Working Group idea came from, which would be this three-part group, a representative from the Commission, the Regional Emergency Planning Committee, and someone from AmeriCorps that met on a biannual basis and discussed what projects were feasible to take on, what was being done, who was working where. Because that's the level of coordination we didn't have in the last round. And I think it would just be a matter of you all recommending that that group come and give us some reports back on our progress.
And what specific action would we have to take in order to make that happen, in your opinion?
I'm not quite sure. I might have to get a little advice about that.
I would ask, to the chair, to give us some language that we should use to do that, because I was very disappointed that, I think, there were 24 recommendations and only two or three, you know, actually, I think, from any, we certainly don't want that to happen again.
Well, 12 were ongoing, though.
Right. 12 were ongoing. There was only nine that carried over that had no attention, and some of that was the way they were worded.
I think a lot of this is going to be ongoing, and it's not something that we complete that and move off the plan.
But in any case, if you don't speak.
I do have a question. And I think on the slide, maybe it was cut off on the 2010 plan, you had, I think, 10 towns listed there. You did mention that Falmouth is not participating directly, but they're doing their own thing. So that leaves four that, maybe you can talk about what they're doing or not doing, or does that impact potential FEMA funding going forward?
It does impact it for those towns. I think that the biggest reason why there are only five that have submitted plans alongside the county's plan is just it's been a tough year for them. I think they've felt really constrained with resources. And we've tried to be as supportive as we can to help them draft certain sections, provide boilerplate text, really help with the layout of the plan. We've provided a lot of GIS, but I think it's just a resource issue on the local level. And one town that's not up there, you can't see Mashpee. I've just spoken with them, and they're ready to get the ball rolling on the air. And Mashpee has a 2004 plan, so it's an update that they're talking about, and I think that they could get it done in a matter of months. So they're only going to have a lapse in their certification as soon as they get a plan approved, they'll be eligible for the funding again.
Any other questions?
That was very good. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I just also want to mention that Ryan now received an award. We're all aware of that. She's given honorary mention for her energy plan.
She's presenting.
Oh, you're presenting.
I'm presenting at the National ABA.
Right. Healthy, what NDA stands for?
American Planning Association.
And that is quite an honor. Congratulations.
Thank you for letting me.
We have some time before our next agenda item, which is the IT presentation, the IT budget.
I'd like to move the general.
Summary of actions?
Summary of actions.
Okay, items one through 19.
I have 15, too. Oh, there's a new one, yeah?
There's a new one.
Give me a moment here.
Okay.
And then, sort of, what is PSC, Environmental Services? Is that the trash removal?
I don't know. I haven't read the contract.
Okay, I'll slow it down.
A motion to approve items 1 through 19, is there a second?
A second.
Well, that's a company, yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. With a vote of three, yes. How simple. Okay, a couple of things.
Oh, you always start something great.
She's already started starting. We've taken care of a letter from Andy. I wanted to report at this time, rather than during the report time, on a meeting I attended in the Senate President's office last Thursday regarding CME. And the meeting was attended by a few of the chiefs on the Cape, staff from both Senator Murray's office and Senator O'Leary's office, and Senator O'Leary, but most of the time they sent President Murray for part of the time. The upshot of it is, they have come up with a structure for a board of oversight or overseers or any name that wishes to be called at the time.
Maybe a trustees.
Yeah, it would be more of a trustee group, but what this group would do would be to actually be responsible for the revenues that come in related to CME services and the expenditure of those services. In the discussions, it was also talked about, in order to continue to make the CME service possible, that the county could, oh, the three members of this oversight board would be a county commissioner, a member of Cape Cod Hospital, and a fire chief, because these are the three stakeholders in the, Cape Cod Hospital is a significant contributor to CME and a recipient of the services, needless to say, along with the person in the ambulance is Cape Cod Hospital.
How would the sheriff be treated in this?
Well, I'm getting to that. So, and then the county would then contract with the sheriff to provide these services. In other words, treat the sheriffs as the vendor. And the big discussion around this had to do with the actual cost of providing the service. Do we really know what that cost is? And no one really does know. The sheriff says it's $400,000, it's $500,000. It is very much tied in with his dispatch service over at the, on the base. And so we talked about how to get a handle on those services and came up with the idea that we should have someone actually do a financial audit or evaluation of those services and their costs. So that if the county is going to be the contractor for the services, we really need to know what the cost of those services are, as they refer to it per patch, which is per call. And there are approximately 33,000 patches a year. So what does it cost per patch? We know that in District 5, which comprises Bristol County and Plymouth County and Barnstable County, but they're excluded from that because the regional service is more with Plymouth and Bristol, is either $4 to $5 a patch. Looking at the numbers we have, it looks more like $8 per patch, which seems significantly high if you look at the 33,000 patches and the actual cost that the sheriff has set. So we propose that, or the staff of the two senate offices propose that we do a financial evaluation, and a good place to have that service performed would be A&amp;F.
So the senate, if I understand it, but the senate office is the one that asked for the?
The senate president and Senator O'Leary. And so it was suggested that that would be a good place to have this done. And so we agreed, and we all agreed, those of us at the meeting. First of all, it had to be done. And secondly, if we could obtain someone through A&amp;F to do that, that would be a good thing. So my last communication is that the sheriff has agreed to that. He's agreed to trustees, he's agreed to be a vendor, and he's agreed to have a financial evaluation of the services he's lost. So that's where we are now. So I need to report back to the senate offices today after we discuss this. And if we also agree that having this trustee, this oversight committee, as they refer to it, even though they're strictly trustees, and that we agree that the county could in fact be the contractor for these services. Now, the revenue streams, we know Cape Cod Hospital is contributing something. We expect that we, as the county, will have to contribute something. And we're looking to see what the chiefs can do, which is a little bit difficult. It isn't so much the chiefs as it is the towns, and we all know that the towns are really financially strapped. But the senate offices are also looking at, you know, whether there might be any kind of funding from the state. But the whole idea is to really look to create a sustainable revenue stream, whatever that might be, that would continue to be sustainable over the years, and the trustees would manage that in terms of its investments, the expenditures, all those funds. And so everyone who was at the meeting was in very, was in total agreement to this plan. So if we can agree in concept to move this plan forward, then I can contact the Senate President's office and say, yes, we, the commissioners are in agreement, the county's in agreement to move forward with this, and at least move forward with the A&amp;F financial audit and evaluation of the services. So that's where we are, and if we.
For President, a couple of questions?
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
First of all, if we put money into it, it has to come out of something. It isn't, you know, we, do you have some idea of what, either the percentage of money you think, or do you know money?
Because we won't know until we get the financial audit and really have a handle on money cost.
And the second thing is, if we start off with not requiring participation by the towns, how will we get them to participate afterwards?
Well, we're not there yet, Phil. I know those are good questions. Right now, what we need is to let them know that in concept, we support this plan right now, so that we can continue with the next steps. And those questions clearly need to be asked. But I'm not sure we're ready for that yet.
Yes, I just.
Wait a minute, are you done? Do you have one question?
I think that going forward, I think that we have a, we had implied to the fire chief that we would be supportive of making sure that the service would continue. And I think that, from what you've said, that's in line with that, you know, that implied commitment that we made.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, I just thank the senate president and Senator O'Leary for really not letting this go and working on it and coming up with this plan, because there is then accountability of what is happening with that money and where it's going. And I think that everybody should be satisfied with this solution if we can push it through. I think it's a win-win all around.
I agree. I think getting this concept on the road and getting this eval done is important. And I have not seen the dispatch services at the base with the sheriff, isn't Mark has it? You have?
I've seen him. It's not clear to me how the CME integrates in that.
If you haven't, we'd love to set up a time next week, maybe Tuesday afternoon, for any of you who want to go there and meet with the sheriff and actually have him give us a complete overview of the service and how the county participates in that, what he actually does.
In the past time, when it was over here, you know, we've been sort of, how much different is it from, you know, the?
Well, they have more space. That was the whole idea. They've expanded their space, you know, they're in the fire station at the base, and they have their own setup over there, and that was part of their constraint. Over here in the public safety buildings, they didn't have the space. So they've expanded, they have more space. But like I said, I don't understand in terms of the CME dispatch piece of this, the patches, how that integrates with the regular, they certainly, I know, don't have separate people doing CME and separate people doing dispatch. It's all integrated. How it's integrated, I don't understand.
And I think that that's, you know, that bears on why, as far as the incremental cost.
Oh, yeah.
So. So, you know, I wonder, as we go through it, we start to look at the dollar thesis to how do you separate out, you know, overall operation and overhead that's part of that to identify what the unit of pass cost. Since Bristol County and Plymouth County are operating, is there any information that's available based upon, have they organized their response?
The executive director of that council is present at the meeting. So I think if there's information that you might want to get from him, let me know what it is. I can contact him, and we can get the information back, and then have a.
And I don't understand how other places do it, but in talking with Senator O'Leary's staff, it seems that one of the issues with this CME thing is everybody in the state does it different.
Yes.
So there's no, like, sweeping reform to come up with one solution in the short term anyways. Maybe that's a long-term thing, but everybody does it different.
Well, that's the ultimate goal, I think, is on Beacon Hill, is to have it all done the same way throughout the state, because they always talk about the fact that we have, what, 25 centers for dispatching? The state of Maryland has like three, or California has five. And why do we have so many? Why can't we regionalize it and really make it more relevant to what we're trying to do? It's, and the executive director of the Emergency Dispatch Council was really talking about how it operates in those counties, and it's totally different. It's not even the same in Plymouth as it is in Bristol. So, and we've already talked about Falmouth, which is a small thing, like, I don't even think they participate, but anyway.
Well, you got your revenue streams. You know, one of the things that I have difficulty understanding is the fact that it's part of a service, you know, the call for an ambulance that comes to the hospital, is the, everything is paid for with regard to the provision of that service, but I'm being told that the fed, either Medicaid or Medicare, which one it is.
Medicare.
Medicare won't pay for that phone call. And if that phone call is supposed to be, say, an essential part of, let's say, preparing the provider of healthcare services, I don't understand why that isn't integrated with the cost, because that would, to me, be an automatic revenue stream, and we would take care of the.
The feds do not permit it. We thought, they just don't permit it.
I'm just stating my.
It's not possible.
Have a series of rules, what's in, what's out.
And actually, do we, hospital pays the full freight in Plymouth County for it, and it's a couple hundred thousand dollars there, but there are a lot of people there, too. So that they don't. And the hospital is looking at ways in which there might be a charge. See, right now, all of the towns bill Medicaid, Medicare for ambulance services, and the towns get the revenues from that. And then it's up, and all the towns apportioned that revenue differently. Some towns, that it all goes into the general fund to be appropriated for other town services. Some towns allow the fire chiefs to keep a portion of that revenue, and then the rest of it goes into the general fund for some other appropriations. So it's all so different. And I think we have to make the first step, which is at least to find out what this now, the service now costs, and then how we're going to pay for that, get that up and running. And in the meantime, spend the next five years trying.